I call this July 12th meeting of the Economic Development Advisory Board to order. Let's just get started. Thanks for all for coming. A quick reminder today is kind of we're trying to get a couple more applications in or interviews in was going to be two. Looks like it's going to be one after all. And then we'll have some time to deliberate, think through. The board structure turns out that we couldn't have everybody attend today. So Ben tried to schedule. We can talk through scheduling and what feels the best for everybody, but another hour tomorrow afternoon to make sure that we have all of our voting, our current voting members present. Because right now we'll have Brad. So we'll, we'll go through this. Let me share the agenda. We'll go through that one interview in a few minutes when Sina arrives. And then we'll, we'll, we'll kind of go into closed session and discuss the applicants so far and our thoughts and not make a final recommendation, but have something to bring to the, the rest of the folks that will be able to make it tomorrow for us to make a final recommendation to get to the commission with their approval at next week's meeting. Any conflicts of interest disclosures or export aid communication? Hearing none. Are there any citizens to be heard? Seeing none. Introductions. I think everybody knows each other, but maybe not. Does anybody, would anybody like introduction? No, I think everybody has each other. No presentations. First agenda item is interviews candidates for economic development advisory board vacancies. We have St. Agary as the last remaining applicant to be interviewed. We should be showing up as early as 3:20. Yeah, so this should be quicker than last time. Ben sent out a useful one cheater that has the photos for all of the applicants and their applications as well to help jog our memories for those who approved the applications. Any, any questions or thoughts while we're waiting for our applicant?
I wasn't able to open any of the applications for whatever reason, but I was to view the Zoom meeting from the last interviews. So that was probably adequate.
Okay. So you're talking about that link.
The links weren't working and then the email he sent with all of the applications attached. One of them, what I was able to open and the rest were in a different format that I wasn't getting to open with whatever my system is reading.
Cause I can probably bring it up on our screen here most likely.
It opened up as, as like an email file. It opened for me in Gmail.
I forwarded it to a different, if that would work and it still wasn't working, but that was a great idea. It's probably me, I'm sure.
I sometimes, the ones Ben Riley would send me, I always had.
Aside just before this session.
You know, our skies had stayed blue for a long time. So I remember last time we'd been up on the mountain and there was so much smoke in the air. Yeah, it was just awful. And we hiked up to the back of the trail called the Mountain V Trail. We made from Warner Lake campground. Even that all, they're so incredible and the skies were so clear. You could just see.
Well, there's that big one in California too. I'm surprised we haven't gotten smoke from it. It's outside of Yosemite. It's threatening the Maricopa Grove, which is sad. But we have been lucky, Mary. You're right. I hadn't really thought about.
I really liked it. And it was when I was up hiking in the south last weekend, the wildfires were still just crazy. I mean, they were just crazy. They were everywhere. They were, you know.
Can you resend that document that has all of the screenshots?
And it was so lush. I mean, lush for the middle of, for almost the middle of July.
It's been such an early monsoon season. I mean, they've gotten so much moisture. Even now there's a ton of moisture over the mountains. It's wild.
Great. Okay. It can go all summer.
Let it rain.
Weekend before last, I was up at Warner, or up at Geiser Pass. Yeah, that's a corner. Two weeks ago and then two weeks ago is Geiser. And the storm rolled in and it was snowing. Leaving snow on the ground and raining. Oh my gosh, it was amazing.
That's really cool.
Oh yeah.
We were on the green last week, right? When that giant flash flood.
That's great. Didn't you?
We did. And we were just on the back end of the bump. It was, it was just bonkers getting down to Swayze's and seeing the debris. It was terrifying. Glad nobody got injured as far as I know anyway.
You mean that you've got flooding?
The green went from like 3,000 CFS to almost 16 overnight.
Oh scary. Anybody's boats? The boats were tied up.
This is in Deso Gray. It, we were right behind it. It was the Price River, I guess flooded and then it flooded on the east side as well. That they had to take backos to clear out the road down to the takeout. There was two feet of mud on the ramp. It was a huge flood. I didn't hear about anybody losing any equipment. Thank goodness, but it was still scary when that happened. We didn't see any bear, which is so crazy because the ranger told us at the ramp that they had had a trip go down just a few days before ours and seen bear activity at every camp they stopped at and we got lucky.
Yeah, they, I, there was a people that went down last summer that they had to sleep in their boat.
No, we got so lucky. The weather was beautiful. The only places I've seen bears is in Westwater. Actually I've never seen it over there. What just happened?
You know, Michelle Hill. She works out at the airport now. She
Yeah, I know Michelle.
She was on one of those islands in the daily. Just, I think between Rocky and no, it was before, before Rocky. It was, it's between, anyway. And they're standing there and they said, wow, that looks like an odd piece of driftwood floating down the river. It was a bear. Coming straight to the island they were on.
Oh no.
Buried and gone off the island. It was quite the adventure because they kept looking at it like, hey, it's kind of a piece of driftwood. It looks kind of like a bear.
That's terrifying. Terrifying. My, my kids love seeing her and Mike on the river because he's got a bigger boat than ours. And so they always want to ride in his boat. Michelle and Mike are very popular in our family.
Yeah, they're great people.
Yep. That's terrifying.
August, can I ask you a question? When you spoke to Raphael, did you ask him if he would be able to meet tomorrow during the slot that we prepared?
He said he could possibly be tomorrow, but I didn't follow up too much beyond could show up today.
Okay. I'll send him an email.
I'm sure you, your communication's been good, Ben. It was on your side. That's my assumption. Yeah, just great is one of my favorite.
Let's touch base on that after then. Okay.
Sure.
Yeah, I had never been down, Mary. It was my first time.
That's just gorgeous.
That's gorgeous.
Absolutely.
Oh, it's just so deep.
Yeah, it's beautiful. And I rode the whole thing. I haven't rode a boat that long and a long time. I'm still feeling it.
Oh, with that kind of water, you probably could have gone to the school of dry ores and just the river.
No, I'm going to give myself more credit than that. I worked very, very hard.
I'd always go to the school of dry ores as much as possible.
I agree. The less effort possible.
But high water especially, I have to do steer.
Oh gosh, I remember doing the daily in 2011 and just holding on.
We had big water. It's close to commercial. We had big water. I had some friends went down. It was crazy. The year of the mosquito, that's three, four years ago.
2019, I think was a big year.
And so water, because it made the mosquitoes because we had two highs, remember? It got real high and then, then it got cold and the snow stopped melting. So it went down. So all the mosquitoes hatched. Back up and then it went back down.
16 was a big year. 16, I think it hit 70 and then 2009, you know, down below the confluence. But in 2011, I did the daily at like 65,000, which was just silly. I think that's his high. We hit the peak.
It was pretty scary that year.
It was a frightening year. Yes, it was.
Was she supposed to come here or was she?
It's supposed to be at 3:30. Ben said he might be here as early as 3:20. So everybody online, I might just call a recess and turn our, our mic camera off, but I'll, I'll turn it back on when we have our applicant.
Great.
Turn it off. All right, everybody online, seeing as. We have no shows across the board. We're going to move. To the next agenda item, which is a closed session, so.
Make a motion to go into closed session to discuss character and competency of an individual.
Great. Sorry for a second, okay? And all in favor, just you, all right, it goes unanimously with just Brad being the voting member. Okay, I'll stop recording here. All right, so we have just come out of closed session and we will, as we are at the end of our agenda, we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you all for attending.